Oh good, you're here. Do you guys have a few minutes for me to ask some questions? Everyone's asking me. And I'm asking you. Well, everyone's not a good. I've had several people ask me about the Seaver Lakes and what's going on with those. Can you guys give me a quick synopsis of the changes that have made there and all of that?
We're trying to come up with a management plan. We're gathering information, as much information as we can. To try to come up with a sustainable plan.
Alright.
I'll just put this number out there. Pretty much out of pocket last year at Seaver Lakes. We spent three hundred and six thousand dollars on the two lakes last year. And it was more than that. But the out of pocket was three hundred and six thousand plus.
Okay, in 2022?
Yeah.
One of the main things I want to ask about is some of the changes that you guys have made where you've ended the full-time position for the Seaver Lakes. Could you tell me what the title was at? Was that Parks and Rec Director? Position?
I would have to look up to see what the title was.
Was it, yeah, I couldn't remember if it was Parks and Recs or if it was like a management?
Parks and Rec Director.
And then, um, as far as when you ended that position, I believe it was during a meeting in January, middle of January? Possibly the 16th?
Yeah, I don't know. It had to be done before the budget was...
January 16th roughly. And then, do you guys know off the top of your head how much that position was costing the county annually? I want to think around thirty-six.
Yeah.
Does that sound right to you? Okay, roughly.
That was, that was that position. But going back to the Parks and Rec Department where the lake fund was titled as, it's over three hundred thousand.
Whatever, whoa.
The Parks and Rec, the two Seaver Lakes with that position, with fuel, with everything that was spent on those two lakes, was over three hundred thousand dollars last year. And that included those wages.
Okay, so by eliminating that position, not just the position for thirty-six thousand, but that's eliminating even more?
The department.
The department, okay. Thank you. So it's more than just the overhead for the position, it's also fuel? Possibly equipment?
Yeah.
I don't want to take like a ton of time with you because I know you're doing stuff. Maybe if you have time during this next week, if you could look and see like what all the like overall, the total cost is? And I'll circle back around and get that from you, or maybe I could find it in the budget. Uh, I know I'll look too.
The total cost for, for what specific?
For the department, for the, for the department, like the total cost with fuel, with equipment, with the position.
It's kind of hard to put a specific number on it because there was so much. When you start adding in the county employees, the county trucks, the county, it's hard to put a specific number on it.
Um, I think one of the biggest questions I want to ask is like, what's the plan for the future of the Seaver Lakes for Bering, you know, the Bering and Herdland? Seaver Lakes, do you guys, have you guys put anything?
We've been doing, we've been researching what is done with New York Seaver. We've been researching what's done with other lakes. Wakanda State Park, Payo Creek. We're going out and seeing what some of the other communities are doing as far as management of their lakes. What they're doing and how they're doing it and trying to get numbers on what their budgets are and what that costs. And then we're going to put a plan together for a sustainable plan for the lakes.
And then do you guys have any plan, like are you specifically like be talking about the Seaver Lakes on an upcoming agenda? Or is that just going to like come together as you get more information?
Been putting the plan together and once we get enough information, then we will try to figure out what we can do.
Okay, um, and then as far as when you ended the position, because I didn't get the minutes from the 16th meeting, it was just a miss- they weren't in the collection that I got. I did get them, but I didn't see a vote in there.
From the close?
Yeah, I didn't see that it was, went into close, that there was a vote to go into close, that there was a vote to end the position, all of that. Is that, has that been correct?
Exactly, I'll get you the minutes and you can go.
Okay. And then, uh, do you feel that there's a community interest in keeping the Henry Seaver Lakes going, the Knox County, you know, for Bering and Herdland? There's more than just the ones that are in county, but I mean, do you feel like it's a benefit to the Knox County community to have these as recreational areas for the public? Luther?
Oh yeah, I do. Probably wouldn't have done any of this work on.
You just, but you know, there's, there's quite a bit out there. Is there anything that's been like a problem for, that you're seeing? Because you're, you know, you've got, uh, do you have both of them in your district? You've got one? Okay, both Ronnie and, so I mean, what are the challenges you're seeing to keep them going?
That's what we're doing, trying to get a plan going to seek all we need to go forward for years.
Because-
The main thing is it's got to be self-sustainable. Uh, anything that we do out there has to be able to be sustained with the money that's in Seaver Lake. As far as sustainability comes, uh, that means what income we get off of Seaver Lakes. There wasn't a big lump of money that the county has to operate these with because all that was done away with before they were turned over to the county. So the county only has what land is there, so what cash rent we get off of, of it, uh, from the crops, from the pay and stuff like that, any, uh, uh, camp spots that we ran, stuff like that, that's the income. That's what it has to, you know, use to maintain itself.
So when you guys, um, because this three hundred and six thousand plus, that's a lot. How is, how, how is the county adding to what was coming off of the cash rent? Do you know off the top of your head? How much the cash rent was bringing and then how much you were having to supplement?
The budget, the sustainable's somewhere around thirty thousand dollars.
And that, would that be cash rent and camping fees? Or just cash rent?
Both.
And then how were you paying? For example, last year, where did the extra money come from? What fund did that come from?
It was out of general revenue.
So tax dollars?
Yeah.
That would be directly coming out, not like CARES money or American?
We had, we had CARES money, uh, put into some of that, uh, amount. That was spent last year. But not all of it. Uh, and there was a couple of grants in there that were matching grants.
The grants were not part of the three hundred and six though, the three hundred, the three hundred and six was county money. The grants was on top of that.
And then how many? How much money and grants did you, do you think you got? Forty? I don't know why forty sticks out in my head, huh?
Yeah, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
And what was that grant for?
Fifty-five.
And you guys, have you gotten notification that any more grants are going to come through?
We're working on two more possible grants.
And Kelly Lukenow said she came in here and wanted playground equipment and, or maybe I don't, was it one piece of playground equipment? It was in the grant for the Bering Seaver Lake? So I'll wrap it up really quick with, um, what are you planning? Do you have any plans right now that are in the works? For this coming spring or summer, you know, to be working on?
This morning, we've been working on the possibility of walking trail around North Seaver. That was one of the possible grants that we have. And then we're also been checking up on a regular basis on playground equipment for North Seaver. And we haven't been able to get an answer on whether we're going to get the grant or not. And then any other improvements will be based on what we figure out financially. What we can and cannot afford to do, the, um, where a lot of that's coming out of the general and we get, you know, with inflation with what everything else went up. Just trying to make the money reach. We had to make several cutbacks for last year to make, make everything fit for this year, so we had to cut in different places to make it reach.
Without that full-time position, do you guys have a plan for like how you're going to handle the trash and the mowing?
It's part of what we're working on, like I said, we're working with the other lakes and the other communities around to see what they're doing, to see what they can afford to do, what it's costing them. And then we're going to try to take the best of what we get from everybody and use that to improve what we're doing.
It'd be interesting to see how, um, Department of Conservation handles South Seaver. Because I believe they have control of, you know, Department of Conservation really kind of does everything. Um, and I've never really looked at their process, but I mean, it's a nice lake, it's definitely got some amenities, it'd be interesting to see.
That's obviously some of the people that we've been visiting with and, um, they've been very helpful. They've been, uh, they've given me a lot of information on what they're doing and how they're doing it. And they've even told me some stuff not to do with, with the lakes that we're managing. And, um, so yeah, they've been very helpful and we are looking at, that's one of the lakes that we've looked at to see how they're managing it, to see what we can do with these. And, and go back and be financially responsible to the county so that it, we can sustain it.
Yeah, I think some of the people I've talked to, the concern is that, that these are some of the very few amenities that we have, you know, on a, you know, for the public on a county level. I don't know if you guys are getting that.
We're not looking to get rid of them by no means.
We're going to take care of the rest of our abilities and we've got electricity running into Bering Lake, we've got electricity going into Herden Lake. Herden already had electricity, now we've got to run around the lake, so Herden, Bering is down to the lake, where we had to run it, what, three quarters of a mile down, so, yeah, we're getting there.
Did you guys add in campsites last year? No, okay, I remember there was a discussion-
There was dirt work, uh, made to campsites.
We also have water in the Bering Lake.
And that was a big deal last year, I remember getting, getting water all, okay.
Getting it all in there, so we can add the camping sites.
You know, in the years before, it was bathrooms, you know, adding bathrooms in. First at Herdland, then at Bering, you know, it's, it's been a long-
There's been a lot done over the last few years.
I would say over a long period of time, uh, more than a few years, like it's been pretty steadily, just a little tiny bit at a time. That three hundred thousand, uh, is a lot, especially when you look at our, like, so. I'll look in, if you find it in the budget, if you guys could let me know, that would be awesome. Do you want to add anything? Is there anything you, you know, want me to tell people, um, about the Knox County Henry Seaver Lakes?
The biggest thing is if you try to go and do too much too fast, then it's not going to be sustainable. So you're not going to be able to manage it properly. So the main thing is, is as you said, we keep pecking and doing little things on it to build those up. But at the same time, you've got to be able to do what you can to say, make sure you can manage those properly. Or else you're going to just, you're going to create a position where they're not sustainable. And if you do that, then it's, I don't know, honestly, it's going to be worse than if you've never done anything at all. So the main thing is make sure that they stay sustainable, uh, so we don't get into that position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Switching gears, have you guys seen the strategic plan?
Do you have a strategic plan?
Yeah, the Knox County Strategic Plan, the, uh, Regional Planning?
They're right in front of me.
Yes. Okay, are you guys, um, are you guys going to be involved in, in kind of the process of this? I haven't, I have not read the entire thing. I'm just kind of getting like an in general speed. Do you guys have thoughts? What's your thoughts on it Luther?
Don't have it right now.
Did you, did you read it?
Yeah, I did.
And are you in agreement with the stuff that's in there?
Everybody's can be, can do better for the county, anybody, but you can only do so much with so much money. We're a small county, sure, but we're getting there, we're coming up tomorrow. I don't think we'll ever be big.
That was brought to me the other day about that plan and I've done, asked some questions, I was at several of the meetings. And I asked questions about that. And one of the things that I was told through Regional Planning is that it's my understanding that Regional Planning funded that, I'm not sure where the funding came from. My understanding that Regional Planning funded it. And the reason that they wanted that done was to help us qualify for these demolition grants. They said that being done will help us qualify for the demolition grants of the, to get some of these buildings took out of here. After, like I said, when I was questioned about it and I went back to that specific question, that one of the reasons that needed to be done was so that it helped us get the demolition grant that you're aware of, with these commercial buildings and with the, the other structures, not only any dining, but in the rest of the county. Uh, it's my understanding that another community, at least one more community in the county is applying for those websites, the dining. And so that is a stepping stone to help qualify for those grants. And that's why the city dining was in on it, that's why, um, that they set that up.
I remember, because you're part of the group that got it going, and I remember when I talked to Brenda and she said that, um, you guys as a group contacted Regional Planning, I was like, what can we do? What can we do to be more proactive and just all of this community betterment? And that's when Derek was like, hey, we're doing the strategic plans with these other communities, let's do one for Knox as well. That's to me how it got, um, that's the way I understand it, it got started. Ronnie, did you read this?
Yeah. I'll be honest, I thought for five thousand dollars, uh, it would have been a little more informative from there. Um, there's other counties that have done stuff like that, uh, to get feedback, to get, you know, areas that they need to start working on. Uh, it went in more into depth on strategic housing planning, um, what, what is actually needed in the community, what type of housing, uh, moving forward, uh, different areas like that. It just seemed like more of a broad spectrum of, you know, hey, these are, you know, areas of different things that you can do, but I mean, a lot of us already know all that. Now, I mean, that's not, you know, a lot of that in there, I felt was just kind of common sense in a small community, what, you know, you need and everything, but there was no strategic plan on how to move forward.
It was steps in the process.
Where other counties, when they done these, they got an actual process of like where to start, what to do first, how to, how to become a better, you know, county and community, uh, by working together and by where, you know, the areas are to start and where you need to finish, uh, to, uh, get to that point. This one just kind of, you know, stated in there, you know, the different bad spots in the county, the different things like that. Um, which, I mean, you got, Ronnie, you can find the bad spots. Um, it's not hard, but the, the thing about a strategic plan is a strategic plan on how to move forward. And that's what I felt like we didn't get, is that plan. Uh, where other counties, uh, must have been with a different person or something, but they had, um, they had it down to how many housings, uh, buildings and stuff that were needed to be put up, what type, whether they were duplexes, whether they were, you know, more like condos, uh, style homes, uh, for teachers, for, you know, different things like that. What, what housing you need to be able to attract the people that you need in the community to help get it started, to get it growing. Because if you don't start getting the people to move in here that are already working here, that are leaving elsewhere and just driving here for work and then moving and living away, you need housing for those people that are already in your community to get them to stay in your community. And that's where I felt, you know, they kind of fell short is what styles of homes do we need to get those people that aren't living here to stay here? And then once we get that, then they have another strategic plan step moving forward. So then that will help you build and grow off that, and then that's going to know where you need to be to end up, you know, to be able to retain more people in the community. That's what I thought was going to happen. What I felt like we got was far from that. Uh, some of the stuff in there, as far as the shirt ideas and stuff, I felt it was more of a mockery, uh, to the county.
I did hear about the shirt ideas.
Um, so I don't know, I, I feel like, um, it was a little bit disrespectful of some of the stuff that was in there. Um, my opinion, uh, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at on it. I thought for the money that was spent on it, it would have been a little better. Speced out as far as the plan going forward, not just, hey, here's bad spots, here's some, you know, this is, you know, some ideas, you know. But like I said, that's, that's just my opinion, but.
Do you have more of an opinion? Yeah, okay.
That pretty much sums it up for me, so I'm pretty sure that-
What he said?
That's what I was told, in office.
I was told it was-
Man of Little Word.
He'd done, he'd done those in like two other counties.
Uh, it was Canton, LaGrange, Lancaster, Memphis, and Knox. And then there was a component that they did a piece for Kirksville. Um, I went and got, um, I sent and requested the actual these, I have the digital copies, I will probably post them. I'll pub, make them public soon. And then I also requested the financials for how much every, you know, the invoices basically for the, the cost. And so yes, ours, uh, Canton, LaGrange, Memphis, Lancaster, and Knox was a five thousand dollar each. And then there was a Kirksville piece and it didn't look like it was, I didn't get the Kirksville actual plan because it hadn't been completed yet, but that was a thousand dollars, so, uh, I'm not sure if that's just like a branch of something they had already started, like maybe they were adding to another piece of a plan. Um, and I'm wondering if, um, if even, you know, if any of you would have considered going back and talking to RPC and having that piece added back, added in, that step process, like if, if it would be possible to build off of, you know what I mean, and, and get what you're asking for Ronnie, which would be a step-by-step guide. I don't know if that's possible, um, you might want to ask Derek, I'll, uh, I'll try to ask his, you know, ask myself if it's possible to, uh, you know, maybe that's what Kirksville's, maybe they got a strategic plan and they needed a step-by-step process and, and maybe that's like a cost, uh, addition, you know, it might be something that this consulting group could, um, add in, I'm not sure. But we're heard to try to find out.
So you, was this artwork funds?
I will, I'll look for my email and find out, uh, exactly what, uh, because I know that was part of my, um, questioning. I'm just, it's, I've been really busy for the last few weeks and so I've been meaning to dive into this, same with the budget, and I have not been able to give it a lot of attention just when we've had a ton of breaking news, um, and two, I've had to deal with some, uh, coalition stuff, so I just got back from Jeff City.
But you have paperwork showing that it costs five thousand for that?
Yeah.
Was that, that-
Well, I have an invoice, uh, from this, from the company. And so, uh, it was five, each community was exactly five thousand dollars. And going in, I was told that it, there was a price range, it would be between three and five thousand dollars per strategic plan, um, but they, they had not been completed yet and so, so none of that. They, they were waiting for, um, I, I'm guessing, you know, the billing piece of it to come through so they could be like more on point. And then when they got all of that stuff, um, I sent and requested it and they turned it over, so. I have all that. I've actually had it for a couple, possibly a few weeks. It's just been so busy, I have not been able to dig through it. And I'm sorry to say, I have not read this yet. I've read, I've, you know, skimmed a little, but I have not, um, really dove in with my highlighter and my notes and, uh, and tried to pull pieces out, so, very well. Is there anything you want me to tell the world before I split? Is there anything you have going on? Uh, I know in Scotland, I'm working on a rock increase story. You know, rock, the county, uh, rock program is, you know, prices are going up, fuel's gone up, the expense of, of rock, I think they're at a on their menu of rock. And this is for county roads only, you know, for people purchasing rocks for their county roads. I think it's like two dollars per item, it's gone up, everything's gone up, two dollars per, um, everything, you know, and it's because they're in the red as far as like they're paying more than, um, it's not. So I've been thinking every county is probably doing that?
Every county does, probably.
Okay, well, if you guys need any-
We do have a match program that we, uh, putting that out in the paper, oh, a copy of this lane right there. In front of you, on that map to your left, at the very top of that sheet. So that'd be three days where people come in and sign up for a match rock.
Um, maybe I should explain this better with a story? If you want me to, let me know. I will, I'm really happy to do that. And then are these prices higher than usual, than what they were last year? Or are you-
Yeah, I mean, it goes up about every year, so.
Everything's up, okay. How about I circle back around because this list is getting pretty?
We figured a fifty thousand dollar increase in rock. We figured a fifty thousand dollar increase to buy the same amount of rock.
And that, and is that including fuel?
No.
That's just rock, just rock.
How did you guys, um, are you guys just buying pay-as-you-go fuel because I, I know that we had not done, where you order it ahead of time, where you buy it ahead of time? Because we didn't have that offered, you know, like- Because we didn't have that offered, you know, like it just wasn't a thing that we could do here in Knox. Um, was it other, you know, in other county that they were doing that, but I'm not sure that they're still able to after the fact.
We're also working on that, we've been working on that since the first of the year, and where our fuel's coming from, what we're paying for, and what the different prices are from the different suppliers, and possible ways to get those costs down, um. It's a lot of numbers to put all together, we've, uh, Marlane's been very helpful to give us the numbers, we're, and we're trying to put all those together for an a, analysis, to know where our money's going, what's being spent on, and then how we can save off of that fuel, because fuel is one of our biggest expenses, and so, we're trying to figure out how to, to save some off of that. And the rock, there's really not much way, I mean, the rock, we got one supplier, they cost what it cost. But the fuel, we've got options, and we're trying to put together a detailed plan on what we can do with that, and possibly look and have some other stuff, some refunds and different things, to get money back for fuel that we've already bought.
Okay, well, keep me posted. Yeah, if you guys have anything come across, they, uh, don't wait for me. Uh, I'll come in periodically and try to check in with you as much as I can, but if something comes up that is gonna be public interest, like holler, and I'll be more than happy to help. Yeah, okay, can I have this? I have, it's in the center.
I can give it to them.
It's in the paper.
Yeah, it's in the paper.
Can I have this?
Yeah.
Is this for public, or?
You can have that.
Okay, I'm turning this off.